Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Troy City Council, a special finance meeting this evening. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is just a flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Councilmember Keel.
Right.
Councilmember Brosnan.
Here.
Councilmember McLaren.
Zim.
Councilmember Vera.
Present.
Councilmember Sorrento.
Here.
Councilmember Casey.
Here.
And Council President Steele, also present. At this time, I would just announce that the agenda includes one ordinance and five resolutions, six resolutions, seven resolutions. And if there is anyone who wishes at this point to speak to the council on any one of those agenda items, this is your opportunity as part of the public forum. So please come forward, state your name and place of residence, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Sure. Sorry, I don't really have a voice. Johnna Favreau, 67, Excelsior Ave. And I just wanted to make public comment in regards to the reallocating of funds, ARPA funds. I was a little disappointment disappointed for a couple of reasons. If I was understanding correctly, originally a million dollars had been set aside for a community center in Troy. And then this year, it was determined that the city couldn't establish and maintain a community center. So a couple of months ago, I believe, like $350,000 or around there, was given to Team Hero, which is great, not discrediting that decision, but I believe that we left about $700,000 in that line. And I know that the Troy Public Library submitted an application within the last couple of months. They needed assistance for their children's room, which was flooded a couple of months back due to flooding. And they haven't had the funding to rebuild. And the Troy Public Library is a vital resource to all residents in Troy. It's a free resource, and it's like at the top of the list for quality of life improvements for all residents. So I was a little disappointed that that project only totaling up to $350,000 wasn't included. I was also a little disappointed to see that no funding was allocated toward Kinlock Park. Two years ago, our playground equipment was removed, and there's been nothing there for two years now. And I've been working with two administrations, and every time I've requested community meetings to discuss playground equipment and what we're looking for, both administrations have told me that no conversations can be had until funding for the playground equipment was found. And this was a great opportunity to finish that project. I was happy to see that some money was being allocated towards the lead service line replacements. So thank you for that. And I just urge the administration to put an RFP out as soon as possible. So we can now spend those $14 million completely in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
This one? Okay, there's two up here. I'm Greg Campbell Cohen. I live in South Troy. I have a number of questions about the resolutions and ordinances on the agenda tonight. I'm just gonna read out the questions now, and then if I have follow-up questions, I guess I'll come back up for the special meeting. On Resolution 165, which is for Freer Park, I'm curious what category of eligible use for your park revitalization is supposed to fall under, under the SLRF guidance documents? Regarding Park Pub specifically, are we talking about rehabbing the existing facility or tearing it down and replacing it? And in the event that $3.6 million does not cover all of the items in the scope, what happens and what doesn't, and why? Because it's a pretty broad scope. And then finally, just sort of related to Park Pub generally, how much revenue does it actually currently generate for the city? And how would this impact that? On Resolution 163, which is for One Monument Square, I'm curious what One Monument Square is at this point? And what is the basis for the project's estimated costs, if there is one? On Resolution 167, which is for lead service line replacement, I was hoping to know how additional ARPA funds are going to be used differently from bipartisan infrastructure law funds that are already allocated for lead service line replacement? And what is the status of the RFP? For upcoming work, and will that come out of ARPA bipartisan infrastructure law or both? I also want to quickly note while we're on lead service line replacements that the inventory hasn't been updated since October 1st of this year. So it's unclear how many replacements actually happened. And then finally, on Ordinance 81, which is the ARPA Omnibus Amendments, my first question is, is emergency relief supposed to have its own project in SLRF reporting? Because I did not see it in the quarterly reports, and it's probably the thing that is most confusing. And finally, do we feel that all of emergency relief funds that have been expended have been spent on things that are related and reasonably proportional to the impact identified? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Does anyone else wish to address the council at this time as part of the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move along to our agenda. Ordinance 81. Ordinance amending the general fund, capital projects fund, and miscellaneous special grants fund budgets to appropriate funding for the American Rescue Plan Act, Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion? Motion, Councilmember Sorrento, second.
Second.
Councilmember Keel. Discussion on the ordinance.
Council President.
Councilmember Vera.
Can someone from the administration give us a, just a brief overview of these transfers? Why certain funding is not, no longer required for certain projects?
Hello, everybody. So just to try to run down it here, down my list, so you'll see some funds being removed from the Knickerbocker Pool. We received a New York Swims grant that will cover almost 6 million of the construction of that pool. We've received bids back around 7 million, and we, that would leave this with about $8 million. So this would also account for any construction overruns, potential change orders. The One Monument Square project. So we've been working very closely with the Governor's Office and John McDonald, the Assemblyman John McDonald. Some of you may know there's a $19 million allocation in the New York State budget for One Monument Square. While working closely with them, the city does need to have skin in the game with that, but that number has changed to 2 million. The Governor's Office, the Assemblyman's Office, we were just with John two days ago discussing this, feels completely comfortable with $2 million being what the city has as skin in the game. Removing funds from City Hall, present and future. This was to undergo some various studies. I think it was also possibly to consider staying here and other build-out options that might have been required to stay here. Although we do have that RFP for a future permanent City Hall, the decision will be made on those in the coming month or so. But whatever option that we go for with that, and which of course the council will be a part of, will be a multimillion-dollar project. So it was felt that at this time, that leftover funding was better put to use at what we, what you see in front of you here. The Lansingberg Firehouse, which is currently going through, I went through soil testing and remediation. That's, money was deducted out of that since there's an existing contract with that right now. Again, another project that would be a multimillion-dollar project. So the leftover funds are better used elsewhere. Again, same with the Alamo site. There is a little over 100,000 left for that, and although that we do need to see an improved Alamo site, you know, there are some smaller upgrades that could happen there to make that a more secure and better-used facility. The amount left, not adequate to really achieve that. There's also, of course, the Freer Park, the money that's going into the Freer Park revitalization. Just to reiterate, the Freer Park is, this is not just about the restaurant. Just call it what it is. That's a huge part of it. That's, that is a, a space that folks use. You could see this turned into a space that not only could generate more revenue, but the community could have more use of. But there's also the key parts of it that if you've ever been to North, the North Lake Avenue section of the park or the lower playground, they're non-existent or dilapidated. They're very heavily used. So these funds could help towards envision, we really would like to see a fully inclusive playground on the North Lake Avenue side of it. Regionally, there's not a really just completely inclusive park that has wide ramps, handicap-accessible swings, sensory equipment. This could really be a destination and would be huge for our residents. That section of the park is ample for this because of the close proximity of parking. Very simple to get sidewalk that could go out to there. So there's so much that could be done. Freer Park is our largest park. Take the golf course just out of it. There's so many different amenities that could be enjoyed up at that park. And we could really see this being the beginning of, of that park realizing what its full potential, going down my list to try to see any other. There's also the Peak Ambulance, the Peak Ambulance, which funds a 10-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week ambulance shift is something that started, I want to say, back in 2022. This is crucial, as we all know. We're dealing with longer wait times at the hospitals. We're dealing with those types of issues. Having this ambulance really improves the safety for our residents. That will be something in the future that will have to be budgeted for, but we wanted to continue that into 2025. There's also the 1 million for the lead pipes. You know, again, another crucial, important endeavor. We feel that that, although we've received a lot of grant funding up to 13 million, this will kind of close that gap in the early months of the year. So that way, we can not really lose any traction with our lead pipe replacement program. One thing some folks here see, and it's almost as if some of this money back to like, say, the community center, so there's no contracted community center. So that's what any of these funds that were pulled to then put into these other projects that we're discussing, Peak, Freer Park, and Lead, they're not contracted. Nobody lost funding. You know, I had the Executive Director of the Historic Society in the mayor's office this morning, almost in tears, thinking that she was losing her 200,000 in contracted money. Once we confirm with her, she's not. That's $100,000 that was left over from the allocation. She was very happy. You know, so that's kind of been a misnomer going around today. So nobody is losing contracted funds. These have to be contracted to be obligated. The MOUs before you are considered a valid obligation in front of the ARPA rules. So that's what, if they don't have the contract, and they can't show the need for those funds, which the contract requires, those monies were now reallocated to these other projects.
So is there currently, I guess, what is the current plan for the Park Pub restaurant?
So that engineering condition report that all of you received, you know, shows a lot of the deficiencies in that structure, whether it's the infrastructure, the utilities, whether it's parts of the walls, whether it's, you know, it's really not ADA compliant. There's a bunch of different issues with that structure. So the plan would be to, with these monies, do the best that we can to make that improvement. That plan is still evolving. It's something that we're working through. Like most projects that the city council may allocate money for or starts, of course, there's all these different design and preliminary design phases, but we know that the 3.6 would be a good amount of money to not only get those two playgrounds up and going and get the whole park ADA compliant, but to make improvements to the Park Pub. And, you know, if there's the potential to, if there's an option to do more that requires some more funding for the park, that's something that obviously would come before the council. But it's a nice amount of money that can really make a huge impact on such a well-visited park.
So how much of the 3.6 million do you think needs to be allocated to the Park Pub by renovations?
Well, I think we've got ranges from that you could do anywhere from, you know, of course, even $2 million would help the, the structure, but estimates of anywhere from 4 to 7 million dollars. It really depends on what we all decide to do. And of course, the council gets, gets involved in that as well. You could see larger dining space, or we might not have the funds for it. It might not be feasible. But the immediate concerns with the play, both playgrounds and the ADA accessibility, and at least getting the structure sound will most certainly eat up that money.
You're, I'm sorry, you're projecting the renovations of Park Pub to be 4 to 7 million?
I'm saying depending on all the different types of, you can look at it as, you could look at it as the exact structure you see now with a unsuitable small kitchen, a small eating space, or you could see it expand. So more folks can benefit from it. You could see a community room that could be brought in there. So again, that's, that's the rough range. I'm sure we could put $2 million into it and still end up making it, you know, a good structure better than what it is now. But that's why I'm giving the range, and that plan is still evolving. It really wasn't until we've had, our city engineer, Russ Reeves, went up there. We've been dealing with different sewer issues and such. And, you know, once we finally got this condition report and started to really review it, it became evident, do we want to just put an RFP out, get another proprietor in there in those same situations, or really try to correct the structure as best we can?
I mean, if you're estimating 4 to 7 million though for, for the pub, and we allocate 3.6 million from ARPA, you're going to eat up all of that, and then this council will have to authorize additional spending, or we would potentially lose, lose that, lose that funding, right?
So, well.
It's going to put us in a, a unique position where.
Not as, well, so, one, that the funding, again, that's why, I mean, the range is wide. I'm trying to give you as what realistic, what we've been told so far. So again, though, it won't jeopardize the funding if we need to end up asking for more because you all will have to agree with, this is the plan for moving forward.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting is it would force the council's hand, right? If, if Park Pub, the renovations end up being $5 million, and we've allocated 3.6 million.
Because if, if certain projects become, are determined that they're inviable for different reasons under the rules, it can be, it can be reallocated. Or exactly, we could just end up spending less, and that's what we have. We've committed to, and have talked to some of the council members, and even our core council updated some of the verbiage and the scopes that you received, is that the number one things are the parks, the two playground areas, making it inclusive, getting everything ADA compliant and up to code. If we get to that point, it costs another $4 million to make a brand-new facility, then that would be something that we'd bring to the council. But we feel from everything that we've discussed with the engineering services that, you know, we're still going to be able to accomplish all that and make a good starting impact at the Park Pub.
So how much, how much should we currently charge in rent for, or did we charge the leases expired as?
Roughly $1,500 a month. Which obviously, if you have an upgraded facility and are providing more opportunity, that could change.
Is that the only revenue that Park Pub generates, $1,500 a month?
To my knowledge, yes. Yeah, they might have been, yeah. They've probably been paying that for like 17 years.
What are you projecting the revenue for a, for a renovated facility?
Well, we're not there yet to give you that exact number, although that, again, depending on where the facility ends up, and you could end up seeing, you can end up seeing higher amount in leasing. You can see it possibly charging on a profit sharing a bit. There's a bunch of different options to look at. Those are models that we're working on to see too, because that will be part of deciding what we end up doing. But to kind of your point, if you look through some of these things that you just questioned on like City Hall future, or the future of City Hall, for example, I don't think the then council ever imagined that that small amount was going to get us a new City Hall or was going to even outfit this building. So you can see here throughout ARPA, you know, certain funds have been allocated to not only possibly seed a larger project, but to get one going.
Well, along those lines, then, the 560,000 being allocated for the Nick Ice Rink, were those unforeseen costs in the current project?
No, those are the costs that you all, well, some of you may, some of you passed when we were first going over the contract for the new Knickerbocker Ice Rink. We talked about all along that those would be, that would be the city's cost, and that it would be getting paid through ARPA funds.
So the total cost then of that project is the 560 that we're allocating now and the 2 million that the county allocated?
Correct.
I guess my other questions about, about this would be the lack of a plan, well, there is a lack of a plan for Monument Square, which has been an ongoing project for, I don't know what it's been, 14 years.
I would say there's a lack of a plan. I mean, we've been working, we're working with Assemblyman's Office and the Governor's Office having almost, you know, twice a month meetings on what we want to see happen there. So I don't know about lack of a plan. If anything, the pivot from the original plan that completely failed with the housing part of it is, you know, that's been changed. That's something that we're working on. But there definitely is a plan for that to be ideally the, you know, with other uses, a permanent home for the farmer's.
Stick a turn for a while.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions? You referenced the engineering study for Freer Park, yet it contained no cost estimates at all. Why is that?
So that was a draft condition report. So that is just to relay the issues that are going on with those structures and facilities and playgrounds on Freer Park. Like I had just said, we're going to be getting to the point of more cost estimates and options of what we can necessarily do with that structure.
And when did you receive that report?
That report, that updated draft report, I received it, I want to say, possibly the day I sent it out to you, maybe the day before.
It's dated October, I believe?
Okay. It's been evolving, and it's been up, it's been, if you want, I'd be more than happy to share you the copy from October as well. It's been something that's been internally discussed about now for a while. And it was just recently updated.
I think my point here is that council has been unfairly asked to review an awful lot of material in a very short period of time for some very important projects that are very near and dear to all of our hearts. And I think it's, I understand there's a timing issue, but we've known about that deadline for years. This is not a new deadline. So overall, I have to, in good conscience, chastise the administration for the handling of this.
Noted.
Furthermore, did you want to answer some?
No, I said noted.
Okay, thank you. I see here that you are saying that the firehouse money is not, no longer needed. Why couldn't this money be used to undertake the study and design plans? Now, are you saying then that everything else will, will require bonding for that?
So the remainder of, the remainder of the firehouse will require bonding. It's going to be a, again, don't have the exact price because we're not there in the project. As much as everybody has supported the firehouse, likes the idea of a firehouse out there, and a lot of things that it can do for it, there is not that exact amount, but it is going to be multi-millions of dollars.
Jump in. On that note, Council President to the council, I apologize. But same as Seamus just mentioned, the monies that are there now include the study, the design. So on top of that, the construction only will be what will have to be bonded for, which was.
Pulled out.
Correct.
So what's.
Not for the study.
The study has already been done. It just needs to be updated. So the concept plan has already been done. The environmental is what's being done now. We believe we can, we'll, we'll be able to fund pre-document bid, which are required, but we just have to update the original concept plan for the new firehouse. So the construction will be all that we'll have to bond for.
Council President.
Councilmember.
Is, is it correct that, that the amount spent on the Lansingberg Firehouse is entirely encapsulated in the 551,000 that's in front of us? Or was there another funding source other than ARPA?
No, just ARPA.
Just ARPA.
Yep.
So the purchase, between the preliminary engineering study that I believe Lobello worked on, the purchase of the land and the remediation, that is the 551.
Correct. So I'll pay for.
So when we remove the 448,000 that's remaining from that line item, there is no funding remaining to complete a more thorough design that could potentially go out to bid, or any money set aside to seek grant funding or anything along.
We're, we're confident, I mean, A, of course, we're going to seek grant funding. So we'll apply for, you know, whatever state funding may be available. But B, we're very confident that we can find the money in-house to support the update of the original concept plan and the bid documents. So that's why the monies were taken from the remainder. So the construction will be with the council. At some point, when we get to that point, the construction will be the ask from the administration to, to bond for.
You know, and. Just to confirm, if I heard correctly, then you're confident that there'll be no need to bond or allocate any city funds for the Nick Pool?
Now you're flipping to the Nick Pool. I thought we were still on the Firehouse.
We've been.
Okay.
We've been.
Well, we were just talking the Firehouse.
Before you arrived.
Yep, the Nick Pool.
All of these.
Yep, the Nick Pool with the New York Swims, we're very confident. We got updated numbers. We're very confident that the monies that were previously appropriated through ARPA, I believe it was over 4 mil, on top of the New York Swims, and that's why we're. um on top of the New York Swims, and that's why we're pulling back some monies from the Nick Pool because we have more than enough to construct, and that's even a non-conservative estimate. So so the New York Swims, obviously, that's $6 million. Um, helped us greatly because that is going to help offset some of the ARPA money and, you know, and I, once again, I apologize. I know Seamus has done, you know, fantastic job explaining this, you know, please know if we could have gotten this request to the council prior to Friday, it would have came to you. Um, there's nothing malicious here, you know, nothing other than literally nonprofits, some of the nonprofits communicating with us, getting to the penny because our goal is to ensure that not a penny, not a dime goes back to the federal government. Um, Council President Steele, Majority Leader Casey, we obviously spoke about the Fair Park, the idea at the ARPA Steering Committee. It did pass, um, it did pass the ARPA Steering Committee. Well, you and I know with ARPA Steering Committee, it's essentially to move it to the floor and your comments at the Steering Committee was, okay, but I need more information. The report, the engineer's report, we asked for it to be updated. That update, we did not get until actually Friday morning when you sent it. Um, that the report that you're looking at was initially done in October. Siemens and CHA, we wanted it updated. Um, the appendices, as mentioned, I believe Seamus told you, um, that should not have been included because we're not at that point yet. So Council President, much like when we approved the money for the Ninkabaker Pool, we approved over $4 million, the council did, the ARPA Steering Committee brought to the council, council approved it, knowing that the Nick Pool was going to be much more than that $4 million. We applied um very aggressively for state grants. We were fortunate. Uh, the governor and folks appropriated or sent us, obviously, the New York Swims. We were successful in that for 6 mil. We're going to be aggressive when it comes to the firehouse. Additionally, um, the ordinance, I know that all of you know, uh, the lead pipe replacement, that's essentially to get us up and running. We're going to hire multiple contractors for 2025. The RFP is going out very soon. And then the peak ambulance, we all knew during budget time that we were going to have to appropriate money for peak ambulance. We mentioned it several times. We mentioned it publicly. The peak ambulance has never been a part of the budget process. Council President knows that also. What we do, what we will have to do for 2026 is obviously plan for peak ambulance. You know, but saying that, that's where the peak ambulance comes from. So we've looked at it, number one, do we want to go into multiple small contracts, which we have done today? Or do we really want to do what's right and make a long-term investment in Fair Park? We thought it's long overdue. North Lake Avenue, um, I fail you. Um, North Lake Avenue miserable. You can't get a transfer chair or wheelchair, let alone a stroller senior tried to get into that park. The park has outdated equipment from the 1980s. The lower end park, we all know Martin Luther King, so many folks from Troy Housing have birthday parties, retirement parties outside there. Any time of the year you go, it's packed. The tennis courts, abysmal. We'll see the tennis courts, we'll we'll have them redone to include a couple pickleball courts and um the restaurant.
The tennis players.
Um, I know, but you know, hey, we're all about working together. We're not, we're only looking to take away uh one and a half, I believe.
Okay.
And then lastly, really quick, the restaurant, come on, let's let's not, you know, sugarcoat this. The restaurant, if it was in Cidion, it it would be probably shut down by code, the health department and others. There are major issues. Not just structural, health issues, um, the sore backs up. The downstairs, if you were to ever see the wiring, it's not safe at all. The deck is being held. You could see in the engineer's report by cinder blocks lifting it up underneath. There's real issues. But that's just a piece of the pie. The Arcadia Building, we have a potential opportunity there, but once again, this will be done in phases, phases, much like the golf course. If you recall, we bonded for $3 million. We did one and a half, one and a half. It was short term, long term. The the parks, that'll be first on the list, so they'll be hit immediately because the parks are the priority. Um, as I mentioned, North Lake Park is not even accessible, let alone ADA compliance. So um, you know, the public input, I know that Council Member um Steve McLaren, when we spoke earlier today, the public input would be part of obviously that process, like the other parks were done. We'll go out, the engineering firm, us will host a public input session where folks talk to us about how they would like to see that park. Much like Kenlock Park, we're going back out to the public um in the upcoming spring, early spring, late uh winter because that park, as you know, monies were poured in to fix the drainage. Um, we're back there and as you know, Kenlock Park is now back on track. So um, but the public input sessions are critical because we need to know how the public feels and how they want to see those parts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I I don't think anyone here disputes the merits of the projects. We're just trying to get answers to our questions.
I'm with you.
So, yeah, in that vein, um, the, you're you're suggesting that we pull a million out of one Monument Square. Uh, we've not seen any kind of uh plans at all for one Monument Square. We've not been involved in these conversations that you've had. Um, what, where is the budget?
Yep. Well, first of all.
And, please, before you.
Okay.
Before you.
I thought you were done.
Let me also, let me uh get my real question in here. Is, if we pull this out, uh, are you saying that we don't need this money and you will not be coming back to the city uh council for any future funding for one Monument Square?
Yes.
Where we have no plans?
Yep. Um, so first of all, um, there are just concept plans in terms of vision right now. Um, it's up to the Governor's Office, I must say, and I have been giving updates to the council as, you know, much information as we can give at this point, Council President. If you recall, 19 mil carved out of the budget. The budget right now is being prepared um on the state level and the 19 mil will be included. The real sticking point, and we've talked about it, is the initial 19 mil included housing on site. Folks are recognizing, we know there's six proposals, RFPs, proposals that have all gone down the tubes. So saying that, our goal is to essentially take what has been said multiple, multiple times at all the charrettes, all the public input sessions. We'd love to see a permanent home for the farmer's market and I know um that Seamus has uh spoken to you about that. We are, we have been sitting with the farmer's market folks. Additionally, the housing, there will be housing included, but not maybe necessarily at that site. So close by, potentially opportunities, we know that Hendrick Hudson is turning commercial space into housing, but some new housing may be potentially right near one Monument Square. We met with John McDonald last week. He's speaking to the Governor's Office. It's just not at the point where we have any types of plans, et cetera. But the goal, in answer to your question, is the 19 mil plus the 2 mil, the 21 mil, that whatever we do there, we will make it fit within those dollars. So the reason being, the million dollars that we're pulling from one monument, once again, we're confident that whatever we ask for in terms of whatever happens, uh, structure, et cetera, the engineering company and the contractor are going to have to fit it within that dollar amount. It's not going to be us, okay, here's our vision and you give us a dollar amount because we know what that's going to be. 25, 30 mil. No, we are going to tell the engineering firm and the contractor, here's the money we have. Now you fit the proposal that we're looking at, a little private, but more public, and that's what the charrette showed. That's what the public, you know, through multiple public input meetings, wanted a more public facility. So we're going to make it more public. We're going to make it accessible. We're going to obviously connect it with the trail. We're going to have waterfront amenities, maybe have a small private restaurant, but we're confident that the monies that are allocated, they're going to have to fit it within that budget. And if we have to pull something, then we do. But right now, it's at that thousand-foot level until we hear back from the Governor's Office through John and at some point meet with the Governor's Office and we'll, you know, we'll update the council as as much as we can. We're just not there yet.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President.
Council Member.
So the the only monies allocated at this point to one monument square are the 19 million in the state budget and um assuming ordinance 81 passes as as proposed, uh, an additional 2 million, so 20.
No, the 2 mil has already been appropriated. What you will be voting on is the MOU for the reso.
The total appropriations for one monument square between the state and the city is $21 million if this ordinance passes.
In addition, the farmer's market, there's a millionaire and there are, so I believe is DRI, half a million for the farmer's market. Okay, so one and a half on top of that from the farmer's market. So and the farmer's market would have a lease. Um, if this were to progress where we wanted to progress, to get a shovel in the ground, obviously, again, we'd have, we'd come back to the council with uh that proposal. But the 2 mil has already been appropriated. What you will be doing, the resos, those MOUs um to satisfy treasury, that's, you know, obviously they're key um to keep the money. And the MOUs with the departments will satisfy that.
Could you provide that to us in writing?
Absolutely.
Can we see that?
We see that, right? Yep, Rick Morrissey has the uh treasury.
So what do you, uh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see the regulations that state that a city can contract with itself.
Okay, I did send you an email earlier today.
What I saw was a, a clip from the resolutions that we already have. I did not see the actual language.
Right, it's fact, it's fact 17.6. If you want me to cut and paste it, I'll send it to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Council President.
Council Member McLaren.
I just have a quick question because you brought up Kenlock.
Yes.
Um, is there existing funding that's going towards Kenlock?
Right now, the funds that were designated for Kenlock have been used. Um, the walkway has been completed, the drainage, um, we were able um to get the landscaper to come back, um, even after spending all that money and it wasn't done right, but now, as you know, we're tying into Emma Willard's uh um drainage system. Um, but saying that in terms of the equipment, um, the monies are not coming out of ARPA monies.
Okay. And, but is there a plan to fund it?
So, just to give an update a little bit about where we are at Kenlock Park, um, that uh, there's actually digging that's going on down there. Emma Willard has allowed us onto their land, you know, uh, Russ Reeves has it where they're digging some trenches. This is supposed to help with that groundwater that continues to raise in the drainage. It sounds like when the original drain, not the original, but from this upgrade to the park, when that drainage system got in, it really had nowhere to go. So it now is going to have somewhere to go. Um, I guess Russ, the way he's explained it to me is that, you know, this digging actually helps doing it in the colder months and so this way that uh the drainage can now go into Emma Willard uh's property where they have, sounds like a swell of sorts to to more drain properly. Um, and then I want to say that's why the mayor is saying that we will then go back and talk with the community, like most parks get their input and look into funding the stuff that never was previously funded. Um, when it comes to playground, I know the basketball court could use a resurface. We even talked about trying to get to that this year. Um, so really this year was about trying to get that drainage problem under control, which we've made progress in. And I will say even the existing um engineer on the uh on the project, um, some of the contractors did ultimately end up coming back, helping a bit with that. That did not cost anything to the city. Um, you know, so there definitely is still, we're not forgetting about Kenlock Park. I personally grew up going to that park. I mean, it was a swamp back then. We just played football in it. Um, but, you know, we definitely, that's a great neighborhood, great community, not a lot of parks around there, so definitely want to see it, you know, filled with families and residents utilizing it.
Thanks. So, and thank you, Seamus. Um, depending how the public wants to see that park will depend on the budget, obviously. So, you know, the first thing, like I said, late winter, early spring, go back out, have a public meeting. I think some folks in the area um have kind of changed their idea of the future of the park. We want to hear, how do you want to see the future of the park? What do you feel you want there? Um, there was talk of a pavilion at one point and then the pavilion was taken out, but we want to go back there, get fresh ideas and then we'll put a budget together.
Thank you. Could you explain to me how this 1 million for lead replacement is going to be used differently than the plethora of funds that are being made available to us um from the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act? Why do we need to take 1 million uh out of other projects when we have so much already at our disposal?
Well, first and foremost, again, we're not pulling from projects that are either not complete or do not need those funds. For instance, just to give the council an idea, Kathy Sheen came into our office maybe around quarter or four. She literally had tears in her eyes.
Can we stick to the topic, please?
But just to give the council an idea, please, I didn't interrupt you. And Kathy Sheen had tears in her eyes because she thought that she was losing $100,000 of her 200. No, we contracted with the Historical Society for 200, not 300. So nothing was taken away from the Historical Society because they already have a budget, they already have their projects set and they needed the 200. So, once again, I just want to make it clear, nothing is being taken away from a project that is already underway. The North Central Community Center, when folks carved out, I was on the council then, when that million dollars was carved out, everyone knew that there was no way a million dollars was going to be able to support buying a a building, restoring it, turning it into a community center and then staffing it. So the idea was, let's use these monies for some existing programs or somebody like Jerry Ford, a team hero, who has a house but not a home, and he had a house. He was, you know, using the Troy Boys and Girls Club as his camp. Now, he has Team Hero, he has a building, he has two years, he brought partners in, but that's an example. What, what's happened here is literally every penny is being accounted for and for the projects that just aren't going to come to fruition or projects that came under budget. Um, a few projects, you know, Seamus literally, you know, went through every penny and found, you know, 30 here, 40 here. Um.
Could you please answer my question?
Saying that, yes, to get back to your question.
Thank you.
Um, so your question, again. So your question, again, was, please.
Okay, my question again was, we're taking 1 million and we're putting it into lead replacement.
Okay, yep.
And I wanted to know how, why that's necessary.
Sure.
When we have so many millions of dollars at our disposal already and many more that we can apply for.
Okay, so the 13 mil, once again, we all know, some of his grants, and we thank the governor for shifting some of the 0% interest loans toward grants. So we have more monies for grants, that's a good thing, the 0% interest loan. However, we met with the EFC and we literally sat down with their folks that process the payments, process the monies. At best, we'll be getting the reimbursement within maybe, and this is like the best scenario, 90 to 120 days. This million dollars, and believe me, this was not us sitting with their staff, these were our folks, Andrew Golden, who has to process these. We are talking if everything goes smoothly. So the fallacy that this is going to be, you know, do the work, get the money, pay the bills, it doesn't work that way. And please, we're, we know government, to get the ARPA monies out the door, which is in our account, it takes time, it takes contracts, it takes, you know, going back and forth because the reimbursements aren't where they were supposed to be, et cetera. So the million dollars is going to be able to front us in order to get multiple contractors. As you know, we're putting out an RFP within the next three, four weeks, it's being worked on now, and the goal is to get multiple contractors. The million dollars, much like we already carved out a million prior, we have a half a million that is going to be out there and it's called potholing, where they actually, you know, go down the streets and seek the lead pipe replacement on the public side. So saying that, the million dollars will be our way of hit the ground running in 2025, not have to wait for reimbursements and just get the project loan. Because with climate change, we all know, we might be able to start lead pipe replacement in March, early April. So we want to be able to just go out there, gangbusters, multiple contractors, and the million dollars will help alleviate that.
So the current RFP has, has expired?
Correct.
When is the new one going out?
Uh, go ahead.
We still have folks on contract for lead replacement till May.
So why are we not funneling this money to those contractors directly rather than contracting with ourselves and, and doing it?
So, and that very well could have satisfied the rule, but since we were, we were doing these MOUs, we did end up adding it in.
Because it was new money going to the contract, I insisted that the council appropriated and that it go, and we didn't have time to execute a new agreement with, or even an amendment, so I thought it best to do it through the general services.
Again.
Or DPU, excuse me.
Again, a timing issue. Got it. Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, council president.
Council member Vera.
The, the, uh, changing gears for just a second here. The, the emergency relief line item, as I think someone mentioned during public comment, I also was unable to locate that in the ARPA report. What has, I see that the original budget was $500,000. We're increasing that by a little over 100,000. What, what has that money been spent on? Was that an ARPA project?
So just, I want to see here, because you could, should see it come back out. So that originally was passed by the council for $500,000 in disaster, natural disaster relief. So that fund.
This council?
Yes.
Correct. You were part of it. So that money has been used towards the Spring Ave landslide. So I know that there was a point that we were talking about also Eddie's Pump Lane getting used out of this fund, which is now getting paid for out of the water fund. We obviously can't use the water fund for stuff like the landslide, the landslide's more appropriate for the natural disaster relief. I do believe back when the council passed the 500,000, that was, it was, it was spoken about that we might be coming back for more out of that category. But the category was used for a part of Ice Storm and Spring Ave landslide. So that's why that remainder is coming out of it, because now the Eddie's Pump Lane, and kind of like I talked to you about earlier, Councilman Vera, you know, Eddie's Pump Lane, there's maybe been 300,000 or so spent on that, that really has helped mitigate the immediate emergency. But as staff and workers up there keep going further, there's more and more deficiencies. It's also such a crucial part of our water infrastructure that, you know, we've talked about doing a secondary valve, Russ Reeves has a better term for it, I apologize, but a bypass valve in case of emergencies. We really, we really shouldn't just have that one crucial piece that if it fails, we're talking about 110,000 people losing water, or even worse, the flooding issues that we were looking at when the mayor first declared an emergency there. So, you know, that's a project that will have to definitely receive more funding, will be coming to the council for that, and there will be a laid out of a full plan, so it's not just, every now and then we need a couple hundred thousand for, to fix that crucial piece of, of water infrastructure.
And so ARPA funds can be used, ARPA funds could be used to resolve the Eddie's Lane Pump Station project.
Yes.
An ongoing, an ongoing emergency.
Correct. I would say actually even for this, a simple ARPA category of lost revenue alone, it would qualify under that, but it would also be considered an emergency as well. The emergencies, I think, detail natural disaster, potential for flooding, things like that. So that's where that could potentially fall under that as well, but we could have probably used a couple other even different.
And so is that, is that the category that the Fair Park Revitalization falls under? Lost revenue from Park Pub?
It probably would qualify under lost revenue, but it would definitely qualify under, I want to say, neighborhood revitalization to, or to make a healthier, safer neighborhood. There might even be just a general parks section for ARPA as well, but most of our parks and recreation elements, you know, are classified under neighborhood health and safety. That's where you would see the other park improvements that were made under ARPA. I want to say that those were under that, that category of allowable uses for the funds.
And in the reason that the administration didn't decide to go back, again, going back to some of the public comment, the reasoning that the administration decided not to go back to entities like the Troy Public Library and other entities that had received ARPA funding is lack of time?
No, no. I, I think it just opened the door, who do you say yes, who do you say no? All of the, the folks who received money wanted more money. And literally to begin and open up, you know, that conversation after, you know, in council pressing, you were in the steering committee and we talked about this, that, you know, we really felt a long-term investment transformational, much like, you know, Taylor 1 and 2, the 2 mil to do the demos, we really felt, let's, you know, maximize these dollars. And while all of the nonprofits, they're amazing, they're doing great work, but their projects, some, most of them are complete, and the ones that wanted more money, it were new, it was new projects. So we just felt to review those projects, to get the budget, to do a contract, A, would, would have potentially, you know, pushed us right to, you know, the very end. If not, you know, we know, obviously tomorrow's December 31st. So it wasn't just timing, it was also, you know, the fact that all of them wanted more money, and guess what? That's great. And, you know, they're all successful nonprofits, but once you open that door, what about the nonprofits who didn't get money and come to the table and do a whole grant request? It, it's just, once you open that door, it would have been very difficult.
We have lots of questions.
We're here. We're here. Believe me, I've been at meetings till midnight.
Yeah.
Make a motion for a 10-minute recess.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We recess for 10 minutes. We recess for 10 minutes. Yep. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're back from recess. We are, at this point, discussing Ordinance 81, and ordinance amending the General Fund Capital Projects Fund and Miscellaneous Special Grants Fund budget to appropriate funding for the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA. Members of the council, do you have comments to discuss, items to bring forth? What is your wish?
Council President.
Councilmember Vera.
I have a few questions about the scope of work for the Freer Park revitalization, if the administration's available.
So are we.
The, the, there's one line item there that says, "Remove existing solar panels causing damage and repair the roof of the ice rink facility." You know, the current proposal in front of us is to allocate 3.6 million, some of which would go to that, to that work. Do we have an estimate, an estimate on that roof work for the ice rink?
We're, you should know, as I mentioned earlier, that's a wish list. What we're going to have to do, what the council would be doing tonight is authorize in 3.7 toward the Freer Park revitalization plan, meaning everything on that list potentially may not get done. We have to do short-term, long-term. It's much like, I said, when the Nick pool, we appropriated the council, when I was on the council then, $4 million, knowing, okay, wait a minute, this pool's gonna cost a lot more than 4 mil. We saw it after state grants. So that list, Councilmember Vera, and I'm glad that you asked this, it's, it's going to have to be cut down, short-term, long-term. You know, the parks are the priority, and getting the restaurant, you know, once again, we're not sure if we can save part of that restaurant. Can we save part of it? Is the foundation okay? And maybe demo two-thirds of the restaurant? We're just not there yet. What we're saying is, let's look at the park at a whole. These are the items that have to, you know, be looked at, get estimates, and, you know, break it down, short-term, long-term. So if you think about it, like, say, if the council say, hey, we want to spend, you know, 2 mil on the restaurant part, guess what? It might come under 2 mil. We want those monies for the park. And the park, obviously, is the priority, but the restaurant, it's definitely part of it or all of it, will have to be demoed. So there's definitely short-term, long-term. The Arcadia Building, it's an item on the list. Our equipment is stored in the Arcadia Building. The roof is leaking. They've band-aided it. There's been talk, including Kathy Sheen today, wants to get that building on the historic registry. And do we have a potential to utilize that building for something else? So saying that, you know, that list are a number of items, but it's going to have to be broken down, short-term, long-term.
Thank you.
So then, ultimately, who, who, who has the authority to decide what from this list is, is being done? If the council, if the council were to approve Ordinance 81 and the following resolutions, is the administration the entity that makes the call on whether or not we remove the solar panels, the revenue-generating solar panels from that building?
So, and, well, and it's unclear that they're revenue-generating right now. From what I understand, they might not even be operable, and we still pay for them, but that's, again, part of the array of solar and all the other things that we're reviewing. But just to, like I explained earlier to you, when we had a conversation, is that the council has to be involved of the next steps, just like all these other projects that you, that you have before, that you had before you before. So even take the Knickerbocker as a great example. Three years ago, when the council said, okay, let's put forth 4, 5 million dollars towards that project, not knowing the exact price, not knowing the exact specs of the pool, not knowing all of those items, you knew that it was gonna cost in that range. We just got construction bids back, now it's the end of 2024. So I guess my whole point is, you will be a part of it, because ultimately, when that has to get, certain work has to get done, contracts will go before the council, you'll get, receive authorization. So it's, it is not like we're getting a 3.6 million-dollar blank check. It's like all the parks, that even some of you, while being on the council, have approved certain amounts of spending. And then you ultimately see when it gets to contract and things like that, to then, you know, be involved in its passage.
And, you know, as Seamus mentioned, the parks are a great example. You know, we authorized the council to, three years ago, a bucket of 2 to 3 million dollars for our parks. There was never a plan at that time. Yeah, we talked about which parts, but even then, it wasn't known at that time. However, the administration had to come back to the council I was on to get authorization for those various contracts. So the council's gonna be involved all along this. You know, like I said, you know, the Nick pool is a perfect example. You know, we authorized the bucket of 4 mil. What other tranches were authorized? Workforce development. Workforce development, a tranche was authorized. Child care.
The Troy farmer's market is, the contracts just got signed, that was authorized a bit ago, knowing, again, key factors. The farmer's market is crucial to the city of Troy, and the business is downtown. It's something we want in our city, etc. So that was a dollar amount that said, okay, that's worth going towards that. That's just other examples of things that the council and some folks that are on the current council have passed before. This is not, again, you're not giving a blank check. That's not how government works. You know, you would have to still, we'd get your authorization when you got to contracting any.
With, with all due respect, once the item is bid, the council's role is, is out of it. So let's be honest about that. And the way the MOUs are written now, we are out of it as well. So I think that the council members' concerns are legitimate and need to be respected.
Yep.
And Council President, you were on the council with me when we authorized prior funding. So saying that, but don't forget, every council member here, if you want updates on projects, etc., but you are right, once the contractor, you know, starts the work, unless there's a change order, but that's government, that's not just Troy. I mean, let's, let's be honest with everyone. Once you authorize the mayor and the construction begins, then we watch it, you know? But that's your role, that's legislative, executive, and nothing has changed from thousands of years.
Exactly.
And to just answer Councilmember Vera's about the solar panels on the roof, that was mentioned in there. Again, there could be, you could probably mention 100 other items in that scope of work that was pulled from the draft condition report that the engineering team did.
Because the scope is only, like, 10 items long, so.
Okay. So, but again, that's to try to give a variation of exactly what type of projects could happen at Freer Park.
Okay.
So then, so then we are to disregard the report that says that the first, one of the top priorities, and, and disregard it then, because they identify the roof as being needing attention within a year? Or, or are we going to, are we going to consider perhaps?
You're kind of messing with my words, but what, what I was saying is that if that whole entire many-page condition report was put into that scope of work, that's not what the objective of the MOU is. It's to satisfy the ARPA obligation to give you an idea of what the project is. Again, going back to past practice, this previous councils have passed millions of dollars off of a three-sentence description of what it is. Please stop pretending like this is out of the norm, with all due respect.
And I was on the council at that time, and just so you're aware, the ARPA steering committee, literally, to Seamus's point, buckets of money, and the council authorized that. What we're giving you tonight is 10 times more than what the councils have previously had.
But let's move on. I will respectfully disagree with that. Moving on, any other questions from any council members? If not, thank you very much.
Oh, I, I did just want to add, I apologize. Thank you, Council President. You know, do know, the 5 million dollars, we all know, this is one-shot money. The 5 mil, that's the monies that are being reallocated, the 3.7, the 800, and then the mil. But these, these monies in the ordinance, you know, do know, if we turn around and the feds, you know, get these dollars, it will jeopardize us going after future federal and even state monies if we aren't able to come together tonight and really put politics aside and, you know, work together. And so saying that, this could jeopardize future funding. And so saying that this could jeopardize future funding opportunities. And I just want to throw that out there. It's not made as a threat, it's, it's a fact. And the fact is that we are fortunate to get the 42 mil. Seamus has worked night and day with Gabrielle, going through every single project.
Thank you.
To get to the penny.
Thank you, Mayor.
So with all due respect, Council President, I listen to you. All I'm asking, let's work together and get this done.
We have been working together and we don't need direction necessarily.
I asked.
I'm very proud.
It was not direction.
Very proud of our council. We, we have a plan going forward. I would entertain a motion from the floor.
Well, Council President, I have a question for Corporation Council.
Okay.
And, uh, I guess stop me if, if you think this would be better handled in an executive session. I don't, I don't believe that's the case. Is it possible to earmark portions of the funding proposed for Freer Park for specific improvements within the park? In other words, we have a laundry list of different items. Is it possible for the council with the legislation in front of us to earmark certain portions of the 3.6 million?
Yes.
Is that something that Corporation Council would be comfortable doing with amendment made on the floor this evening?
You would have to amend.
I would, I would propose an amendment. Would you?
You would have to amend, but.
Yeah.
Yes, if you want to designate an amount for, but hear, hear me out here, okay? If you, if you do that, you have to get the number pretty close because we can't re-obligate funds after December 31st. So if you say 2 million for North Lake or something like that, you're not going to be able to, to say, oh, it'll only cost one and a half million. We need to put that 500,000. You're not going to be able to re-obligate it, I believe. I was just reading the rules again. And, uh, so that, that could be a problem. Unless, unless you, I mean, maybe you can try to get away with saying that, um, it would be, you know, any, any unexpended amount would go towards the other improvements in the park, but you're walking, uh, on thin ice.
Always. The, uh, the, the, uh, the amendment I would, uh, I would propose is that 1.5 million dollars of the Freer Park revitalization allocation be earmarked for park improvements. And that the remaining funds be earmarked for, uh, improvements for park pub.
Restaurant.
Restaurant.
Complex.
Restaurant complex.
I think that's within the council's power to do it. Like I said, I, I hope you're right.
All right, are you enter the essay motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Second, the motion has been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Uh, Councilmember Brosnan. Any discussion on the, on the motion?
Council President Steele.
Councilmember Casey.
We talked about being bipartisan on this. Because of the timing, it isn't just a majority minority vote. We actually do need someone from the minority to vote with us. And we thought it was best to come up with a plan that we could all vote for. So we could do something in a bipartisan fashion. We did start out worlds apart. Of course, it was all last minute, but we did start out worlds apart. But I have to say with the administration, their presentation and the things they presented to the council and the answers, we really whittled it down. So there really was just this one amendment that would make everybody happy and get the votes we need to get this passed tonight. Cause the one thing we don't need is to have a pub that is closed indefinitely. We don't need these other things not funded. We don't, certainly don't need to give back federal money. So we have to do something tonight and, uh, not everybody's happy. But I think, uh, isn't that the definition of bipartisan? So, uh, that's the situation where we're at. Thank you.
Any other comments, uh, discussion on the amendment? Just for the public's edification, the reason that five votes are necessary on this ordinance is that we received the legislation so late that, um, it was necessary. Uh, it cannot vote, be voted, uh, by a simple majority, uh, per the charter. So, um, it did force bipartisanship. Um, I'm very proud of the council tonight. Um, I'm not happy with this package. But you know, that's what compromise is all about, is it's giving and taking and giving again. And so, um, I'm pleased, uh, that we have come to this consensus. And, uh, our Corporation Council would like to say something?
Yes, I would like to suggest a, a tweak to the amendment such that, um, the council designate a minimum of 1.5 million towards park improvements. And with the balance to be expended on the park revitalization project, which could or could not include further park improvements.
Thank you, Corporation Council. That was my intent, that a minimum of 1.5 million would be spent on other park-related improvements.
Such, such as the playground equipment.
Correct, correct. And, and more money could be spent if the renovations to the pub come in at less than the money that's being allocated.
Or if, or if the plan indicates that, you know, renovations might not be, what do I want to say, efficient or something like that? You know what I mean? Just, just, okay, you, you understand what I'm suggesting?
Yes.
To the council, if the council wants to entertain.
Do we need to amend the amendment? Or can we have a consensus that, that was the intent of the original? Rick? Yeah, yeah. We, we can just insert the word minimum and, and go forward.
Yes, I believe, I believe, you know, if you do it, you haven't voted on the amendment yet, so.
No, we have not. So we're, we're all set. Everyone's in agreement on that. Any other comments about the amendment? Comments in general? Okay, all in favor of the amendment as amended? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment is carried. Now on the amended ordinance. I would entertain a, we have a motion already here, so I think we're good. Any other further comments on the ordinance? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amended ordinance is adopted. Resolution 162, resolution setting the dates of the regular monthly meetings of the Troy City Council. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember McLaren. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 162 is adopted. Resolution 163? I'm sorry? I know, yeah. Resolution 163, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to construct certain public improvements at One Monument Square and Riverfront Park using state aid and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion? First, we need a motion.
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan, second.
Second.
Councilmember Keel. Discussion on the resolution.
Okay, Council President?
Councilmember McLaren.
I would like to make a motion to amend the wording of this resolution. The very last paragraph.
Are you talking about Exhibit A to the, uh, to the contract itself?
Yes.
So the, uh, resolution already provides that, uh, that it is subject to a, a final review by Corporation Council. Each of the contracts, which is language I normally insert so that we can make minor adjustments generally after, after the council authorizes both the resolution, uh, excuse me, both the MOU and, uh, my participation in it. So I can commit, uh, you don't have to do that. You would have to do that for each, uh, MOU. But I can commit to you that I will make that change in each of the, in each of the memorandums of understanding.
Okay.
In the Exhibit As.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President?
Councilmember Vera?
Uh, this resolution, along with others, makes reference to, um, Exhibits A, B, and C, which my understanding were, they were not included.
And they're not, I, I don't think they're fully done yet.
Okay. But those can be, those would be considered the minor, minor changes?
Assuming that there's, yeah, yeah, assuming that the, they are in material conformity with the, the memorandums of understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, so some has to do with reporting, some has to do with budgeting and things like that. Okay. But you've already made a substantial budgeting change to one of them.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 163 is adopted. Resolution 164, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to demolish hazardous structures in the city using state aid, state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Keel with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Again, this will also be, uh, corrected by Corporation Council. Discussion? Councilmember Vera?
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I did not see, um, unless I missed it. I didn't see where, uh, ordinance 81 had, had transferred these funds. It looks like we're, we're allocating $247,000 for this task. And I just didn't, I, I might've missed it. I, I didn't see where it was included in here.
So those are, um, existing allocated funds.
That we're obligating.
Along the line of fulfilling that obligation deadline, we put the demos there. There's currently, uh, I want to say $248,000.
So this is money, uh, just to clarify for, uh, well, myself and everyone else. Th- these are monies that had already been allocated. This is part of the million, I believe it was a million in ARPA funds that had, but we have not contracted this 247,000. So we're contracting with Department of General Services in order to fulfill the obligation. So we don't lose the money.
Yep, correct.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 164 is adopted. 165, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to construct certain improvements at Freer Park using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember McLaren, second?
Second.
Councilmember Brosnan? Discussion?
Council President?
Councilmember Vera?
Uh, Section 4.1 states $4 million. Is that, uh, the, a minor change will be made to revise that to the figure that's been approved? The city shall disperse SL, FRF funds to the Department for Qualified Expenditures in a total amount not to exceed $4 million?
So I, I apologize. I believe that when I did that on Friday or finished it on Friday, that it was 4 million at the time. It, it must've been finally reduced or I missed it. But I will, uh, if the council, I mean, the, the ordinance itself makes it 3.6 million, I believe, or 3.7.
Right, and it does say not to exceed, so there, an argument could be made that it doesn't.
Yeah, uh, so, um, I believe that, that I, I can conform that to the ordinance.
I'm just offering the opportunity, if the administration would like uh, an amendment proposed, I'd be happy to do that if you deem one necessary.
Oh, he did, okay. All right, I, I guess, uh, yeah, if you want to, if you, if you can, could conform that to the ordinance, I would actually appreciate that.
Okay. Let me just double check and make sure that's not stated twice. Okay, it is stated twice in, in here.
So in Section 4 and.
And then in the, uh, the, the boilerplate.
In the whereas?
Yeah.
Also, okay.
So I make an, uh, I propose an amendment that we modify the two occurrences of the figure $4 million and revise that figure to state $3,619,706.34.
I'm second.
We have a motion that's amendment to.
Motion.
We, we have a motion that has been made and we have second and we have a third. So, uh, all in favor of the amendment? Opposed? The amendment has been adopted. Now on the amended resolution, do we have any questions, comments? Hearing done.
Council President?
Oh, oh, Councilmember McLaren?
I would just like to say that, um, I am thrilled that these two parks are going to be renovated. I, I think it's long overdue and, you know, I've had conversations already with the administration about involving, uh, the neighborhoods in, in these discussions. And, um, I look forward to, um, you know, having the planning done and, and seeing it come to fruition.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted unanimously. Resolution 166, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to construct a public swimming pool and related improvements at Knickerbocker Park using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan, second by Councilmember Keel. Discussion?
Council President?
Councilmember Vera?
Uh, similar to the previous resolution. I propose an amendment that we modify the two references to $2 million and revise that to, uh, read, uh, $2,845,112.50.
Second.
We have a motion seconded by several people.
I, I apologize.
I'm looking at page one, um, and page three of the resolution. They both state 2 million. Um, but my understanding is we've revised that budget to 2.8 million and change.
Which, uh, are you on?
I'm on Resolution 166.
The pool.
The pool. That's too many.
That's 2 million, if that's right.
Then we have to go back to ordinance 81 and find a home for $845,000.
I suggest community centers in North Central.
Yeah, it's not, shouldn't this number match what was on ordinance 81?
Yes.
Um, I don't have the schedule right now.
Take mine. We changed it to 2.6 mil, right?
Right, it was five and a half. We removed 2.6, which leaves 2.8.
Okay.
And so the same way the Monument Square resolution read 2 million.
Right, okay.
This should read 2.8.
2 million here. I really have managed.
Unless, unless, uh, unless that difference has already been expended, is that the issue? The eight hundred and forty-five thousand has already been spent on the demolition and the engineering? Okay.
There you turn the question.
Trying to speed this.
I, thank you.
Take time, get ready.
I, 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 uh, yeah, I withdraw my, my amendment.
Okay.
Move for vote.
We didn't vote on it, so we're back to resolution one sixty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adopted unanimously. Resolution one sixty-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of Public Utilities for lead service line replacements in the City of Troy using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan, second by Councilmember McLaren. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Resolution one sixty-eight. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire to conduct additional ambulance operations in the city using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Sorrento with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Discussion?
Council President Steele?
Councilmember Casey?
Just like I say, I'm very thankful that we have this money available for this at this time, because I'm not sure what we would do. I'm glad the administration, uh, added this. Not only because of the call volume lately, but the other night, uh, one ambulance was held up for four and a half hours at a hospital, and the other, three and a half. If we didn't have this extra ambulance service, there would be no ambulance ambulances available probably to transport somebody that had to desperately get to the hospital. So until that's straightened out, until we figure this whole thing out, whether it be on the state level or with our upcoming study, I'm just, uh, very happy that we have this funds available. I'm very happy to support this, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Council President?
Councilmember Vera?
Uh, before making an amendment, I will just simply ask. The, the totals of, uh, Schedule A and ordinance eighty-one add up to seven, seven hundred and sixty thousand? And this ordinance says eight hundred thousand? Is there an issue with that? Should it be amended?
The resol, the resolution.
Okay, so the resolution can say it eight hundred. Adopt eight hundred.
Any other comments, questions? What's your thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution one sixty-eight is adopted unanimously. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. We'll, we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute, uh, recess, please. Thank you. Good evening and welcome back. Uh, this is the Troy City Council Special Meeting of December thirtieth. It is now eight oh two. Please rise for the political allegiance.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keel?
Here.
Councilmember Brosnan?
Here.
Councilmember Spain McLaren?
Present.
Councilmember Vera?
Present.
Councilmember Sorrento?
Here.
Councilmember Casey?
Present.
Council President Steele?
Present.
All are present.
Thank you. Uh, very similar to our previous meeting, uh, the agenda includes an ordinance and a number of resolutions, all related to reallocating ARPA funds. At this point of the meeting, anyone wishing to comment on any of those items is invited to come forward, state their name, place of residence. Does anyone wish to comment on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Ordinance eighty-one.
Ordinance eighty-one. Ordinance amending the general fund capital projects fund and miscellaneous special grants fund budgets to appropriate funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Sorrento with a second by Councilmember McLaren. Discussion on the resolution. I would note, for those who are just joining us, this was amended in, uh, our Finance Committee meeting previously. It was a bipartisan amendment. Um, and I want to thank the members of the council for working together on this. It's my hope that we haven't set ourselves up for unfunded, uh, projects that need to be bonded. Um, I'm hopeful, hopeful that we can accomplish what we want, uh, with the reallocations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Ordinance eighty-one passes.
Resolution one sixty-two.
Resolution one sixty-two. Resolution setting the dates of the regular monthly meetings of the Troy City Council. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Keel with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Resolution one sixty-two passes.
Resolution one sixty-three.
Resolution one sixty-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to construct certain public improvements at One Monument Square and Riverfront Park using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember McLaren with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Resolution one sixty-three passes.
One sixty-four.
Resolution one sixty-four. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memory, memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to demolish hazardous structures in the city using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan with a second by Councilmember Keel. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Resolution one sixty-four passes.
One sixty-five.
Resolution one sixty-five. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to construct certain improvements at the Freer Park using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm going to go with Councilmember Sorrento with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Resolution one sixty-five passes.
One sixty-six.
Resolution one sixty-six. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of General Services to construct a public swimming pool and related improvements at Knickerbocker Park using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Keel with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Resolution one sixty-six passes.
One sixty-seven.
Resolution one sixty-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of Public Utilities for lead service line replacements in the City of Troy using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan, second by Councilmember Sorrento. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Resolution one sixty-seven passes.
One sixty-eight.
Resolution one sixty-eight. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Troy Department of Public Safety Bureau, Bureau of Fire to conduct additional ambulance operations in the city using state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan. Council President Steele, Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Member Brosnan, second?
Second.
Councilmember McLaren? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven ayes, zero noes. Resolution one sixty-eight passes.
That concludes our agenda for the evening. At this point in time, we have a public forum for anyone who wishes to comment on any item of interest to them. Um, and if you would kindly come forward, state your name and place of residence, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Cliff Kineers. I'm from eight twelve Rivers Street, Troy, New York. Um, my, my first thing is, um, commend the, the council. You did a bipartisan thing. That's a good thing. Usually when I come down here, it'd be like a buddy system or the majority winning, and, you know, I was tired of seeing that myself. Uh, it was a beautiful night tonight. Let me, um, state that. Um, I hear a lot of monies going around still. ARPA money here and there. Um, I'm still on this, um, fair, not fair park, Prospect Park pool. Um, I'm here in dismals. I'm here and showing gloomy, causing gloomy, looking gloomy. That pool still needs to be fixed. Um, I'm here in one point five, two, a lot of monies going around. I'm paying attention. Um, and, um, but in, in all those conversation with the parks and recreation, that is never being mentioned. Um, so I think, I think everybody should, um, focalize on that also to get that, that pool fixed. Um, and I want to just say, um, everybody have a beautiful new year.
Thank you, and you too. Does anyone else wish to comment during this public forum? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan, seconded by Councilmember Sorrento. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are.